Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm David Vitale, President of the Chicago Board of Education. And on behalf of my fellow members, I welcome you to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. It is August 27th, 2014, and we are holding this month's meeting here at the Board Chambers at 125 South Clark. We will follow the normal order of the meeting. Madam Secretary, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The regular meeting of Wednesday, August 27th, 2014, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Beenan.
Here.
Dr. Hines.
Here.
Vice President Reese.
Here.
Dr. Askoitia.
Present.
Board members up. I'm sorry, excuse me. Board Member Quazo.
Here.
Thank you. President Vitale.
Here.
Six members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize our Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett, and our General Counsel, Mr. James Beverly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This morning, we have many folks to recognize for their outstanding contributions and achievements to our system over the past year and months, years and months. But I would like to start that by taking this opportunity to recognize Beth Swanson. Beth is with us today at our invitation. I thank her for being here. For those of you who don't know, Beth has recently resigned as Deputy to the Mayor for his education policy agenda and taken a leadership role at the Joyce Foundation. Beth has committed the last dozen years of her life to serving the interests of the children of Chicago in a variety of different roles. She started here at CPS, I believe it was in 2002. And if I remember correctly, having been here at the time, Arnie Duncan asked Beth to spruce up and expand and grow our community initiatives and our expanded learning opportunities, extended learning opportunities, our out-of-school stuff, which she did a great job cleaning up. And then eventually, she moved up to the senior position of Budget Officer. A incredibly challenging task always, and did an outstanding job in that role. And then with the advent of three children, she decided it was going to be a little easier to give away money than try to count money. And she spent a couple of years helping the Pritzker-Trobert Family Foundation organize their educational and other giving. And then Mayor Rahm Emanuel asked her to be an advisor to his campaign on education policy and eventually asked her to lead the education transition task force, which she did, and did such an outstanding job that the mayor asked her to become his Deputy for Education for children from birth to college. And we here at the Chicago Public Schools and Board of Education, last time I counted K to 12 counts for a big portion of birth to college, so we got a disproportionate share of her attention and time to our good benefit. And for that, Beth, we really thank you for all of your work to work with the Chicago Public School System and for working with the mayor and setting a really aggressive and important agenda for our children here in Chicago, which is yielding results, which we will hear more about today. That was extraordinary commitment of time and energy, but more importantly, thoughtfulness and policy insight to the work of the Board of Education and Chicago Public Schools and the broader agenda that the mayor has pursued, both in early childhood and at the city colleges as well. So for all of that, Beth, we say thank you. I would say we're going to miss you, we will miss you, in one context, but in another context, we're pleased that you're staying with us here in the city, taking on a senior role at Joyce, and we know that part of their agenda is a strong education agenda, and it'll be good to know that we have a friend in court over at Joyce thinking about us as part of your responsibilities over there. So on a personal note, I've worked with Beth for almost all of those dozen years in one way or another, and I can't think of a better partner and colleague to work with, working through both good times and bad and challenging issues. And it's been a pleasure to work closely with you, and we look forward to continuing to work with you in the future. So on behalf of the Board, Beth, I want to say thank you for all that you've done for the children of Chicago and for the Board of Education, Chicago Public Schools. We really appreciate it.
I will keep it very brief because I don't want to embarrass myself on TV and cry, and also Stella's trained me to keep it to two minutes. But it's been such a privilege to not only work for the mayor, but with Dave, the entire board, Barbara, this entire management team the last few years. And dating back to 2002, the amount of progress that the district has made is just really incredible, and the news just this week, and grad rates and scores at all-time highs, and I hope, and just feel proud to have played even just a small role in all of that. And I say that just not only as one of the team members, but as a parent of three CPS students. So I feel tremendous pride as a mother that this district, too, is just moving in a tremendous direction. And I wish you all absolutely the best of luck and continued success going forward. And I know I won't be far. In fact, I tried to take a few weeks off, but I think I've talked to a number of you in the room already over the last few weeks, so I don't feel far at all. But it's been an incredible journey working with all of you, and I thank you for all the support and friendship. It was truly a joy. So thank you so much.
Beth, I just wanted to say to you, I thank you for your partnership, for your guidance, for your commitment, for your honesty, for your friendship, and quite frankly, for the moments of laughter. I just, as I transitioned from my past life to this present one, you were so instrumental in that transition, and I just thank you, not on behalf of anybody, but from me to you. Thank you so very much, Beth, for all that you've done.
Thanks, Mark.
I just want to say that before I became a Board Member, Beth worked closely with me in developing after-school programs and community schools. And it was a great experience where we advanced this concept to a very high degree. And I really want to thank you for your service to the public schools. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Beth, and good luck. We'll be in touch.
Uh-huh.
You know, I think just before we move on to recognizing those who are here for their accomplishments, we know that about a half hour ago, a parade started down on the south side of Chicago, where 13 young men touched the hearts of the city with their poise and their success. And so I think on behalf of all of us here at the Board of Education and CPS, we too want to congratulate these young men on an extraordinary performance. I think a vast majority of them are actually Chicago Public School students. We'll look to see them in class next Tuesday. But I know we all, to some extent, wish we could be out there either on Michigan Avenue or Melania Park saying congratulations to them for their accomplishments. But we do want to say that we do recognize what they've done, and if we didn't have a Board meeting today, I think most of us would be out there. All right. Okay. Now, we'd like to recognize some of the spectacular academic achievements of our schools. And to do that, I'm going to ask Barbara to take over here.
Thank you, President Vitale. Over the last several weeks, we've released some of the achievement results for the 2013-14 school year. And whether we're discussing the gains on NWEA, the district composite score increases on ACT, increases in freshman on track, or increases in our graduation rate, we're proud of the schools, the professionals at those schools, the parents, students, and the school communities that are making these significant gains. This morning, we honor those schools that deserve special recognition for their accomplishments. And we're pleased to be joined by representatives from Back of the Yards, Brooks College Prep, Lincoln, Robert Brown, Heffron, Poe, Schmidt, and Laura Ward Elementary Schools, as well as representatives from the KIPP Charter School Network to honor them for their achievements. And I'd like to ask Dr. John Barker, our Chief Accountability Officer, to lead us through the recognition of these schools. John?
Good morning, Madam CEO, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to honor excellence this morning. Several academic categories we're going to recognize, and these wonderful people that you see filing in behind me have played a major role, but they're also standing in the place of all the people who they represent, the teams, the parents, especially the students who've done really, really incredible academic work this past year. The first measure that we'll talk about is freshman on track. And freshman on track, just for FYI, is that percentage of first-time freshmen who earned at least five credits and didn't fail more than a half credit. It's a very important metric that we'll talk about in just a little bit as well. We've got some very good news about our freshman on track rate, and that's coming in just a little bit. But what I want to tell you about is the school that had the best freshman on track rate this year. Representing the school that had the highest freshman on track rate is Principal Patricia Brecky from Back of the Yards High School with a 99.3% freshman on track rate. With each one of these principals and persons recognized, I'm going to ask them to come to the podium for just a moment and say a quick word to you. Principal Brecky.
Good morning and thank you. Freshman on track is one important indicator that we use to determine our students' graduation rate within four years, as well as the increased likelihood that they will go on to post-secondary education with their classmates. Together with my amazing team of teachers and my lead teachers, as well as the support of my network chief, Soria, and Deputy Chief Sanchez, we put in the appropriate supports that defined for us what we would use to measure our students and monitor our students' progress towards achieving their freshman on track. We implemented the appropriate academic and social-emotional structure to support our students' academic success. We focused our work with our students on making high school and college graduation a goal, not merely passing grades, but earning quality grades to ensure that they had options for college. The students' investment in their education is also an integral part of their success. Everyone school-wide knew that being a Back of the Yards College Prep student meant being on track. This is part of our Back of the Yards culture. We have a strong belief and a commitment to our students and our families, and we will continue to provide relentless support and assistance to ensure their academic success. Thank you so much.
Now, if you had your windows down, when I called and talked with Principal Deandre Weaver about the ACT gains that they had made at Gwendolyn Brooks High School, you would have heard his excitement. So Gwendolyn Brooks, on this scale, remember ACT is a scale of 1 to 36. The students at Gwendolyn Brooks College Prep increased their score one year to the next, 13 to 14, by 1.3 scale score points. I give you Principal of Gwendolyn Brooks, Deandre Weaver.
It is truly humbling to stand before you today with that news. I cannot tell you how much work has gone into our success this year. For the last two years, every single person in our community, our students, our teachers, our parents, our administrative team, we've all worked incredibly hard to get to this point. And today will not be possible without your support and without the support of the people that are sitting at these desks here today, because we have called on you, and you have supported us in so many different ways. What this means to us, I cannot tell you just how much this means to us. For the last 13 years, our students have averaged a 21 on the ACT. And one of the things that we felt was really important was making sure that when our students come to us, they leave to us in a much better academic place than what we received them at. And it just was not happening. But our staff put in and supported a lot of bold reforms early on, reforms that we would normally wait and use three or four years to undertake, but they were committed to taking them on in less than in that time. And so one of the things that we got really clear on was what we really wanted students to know. We really got clear on how would we assess whether or not they've learned those things. And then what we call our bread and butter is what do we do if they don't learn and what do we do if they have learned? And we, you know, put in supports to make sure that our kids were successful. So I can go on and on, just about, you know, how excited we are. Our staff is getting ready for this year, and so they wanted you all to know how excited they are. But we just wanted to thank you all for your continued support of us. Thank you.
Students across the district in grades 2 through 8 take the NWEA MAP test. That's a measures of academic progress. And Lincoln Elementary is our neighborhood school that had the highest percentage of students. At or above the national average is really a standout for us this morning. The reading score at Lincoln was that 91.1% of the students were at or above the national average, and 88.8% of those students were at or above the national average in math. I give you Assistant Principal Cindy Gerber.
Thank you, CEO Barbara Bird Bennett and Board members, for this recognition. On behalf of Principal Mark Armendaras, another thank you to you. But these recognitions come with a lot of hard work, as all of us know, and it's not just coming from myself or the principal. I'd like to thank our very dedicated and hard-working parent body, who supports education at the home, in the school, and I'd like to thank them for their hours of volunteerism to help support Lincoln. I also would like to thank our extremely hard-working, earnest, and compassionate teachers and staff, members at Lincoln. Without them, I would not be here. And I would also like to thank our student body for being such dedicated and open-minded learners. Thank you so much.
So now, having growth scores in either reading or math at the 99th percentile is a pretty big deal. But I'm going to give you some schools that did it in both reading and math. So this is the 99th percentile on NWEA, growth scores, reading and math. Congratulations this morning to the teams at Ronald H. Brown, Heffron, Poe, The New, Schmidt, and Laura Ward, who've achieved something really stunning, really spectacular, growth in both reading and math at the 99th percentile. Representing Ronald H. Brown this morning, retired Principal Gail Baker.
Thank you so much. Such an honor to be here with you today, recently retired, August 8th, actually. But I couldn't be more proud and excited about my time at Ronald H. Brown Community Academy. It started seven years ago. We were a school on probation, scores quite low. We had a vision. Together with our team, we established high levels of expectation, accountability, and a dream that we could make it happen. And we did. Last year, we became a Level 1 school, and I was so geeked. But also terrified, because you just don't make it one year and not maintain it for the next. So the pressure was on. I'm a worry wart. I made sure that every member of the team felt that worry. I am so proud of all of the staff at Ronald H. Brown Community Academy, our parents, and our 325 students. Thank you. Such an honor.
And now the proud leader of the Heffron team, Principal Jacqueline Hearns.
Good morning. I thank you for this recognition on behalf of the students, staff, and parents of Heffron Elementary School. It has been a challenging and rewarding year. We accepted students from another school and came out a stronger Heffron Elementary School. I like the scores, and I'm glad you do, too.
President Vitale, he may not have been there, but he's sporting the colors. The Principal of Poe, Eric Dockery.
Thank you very much. And I was there this morning. I stopped there before I came here. I live a block away from the park, so go JRW. You've heard it from all of my colleagues, but thank you so much for this recognition. And again, I'm here to accept it on behalf of my students, parents, and my wonderful teachers. This was my first year at Poe, and we pride ourselves as for making smart kids smarter. We know they come in already. We're a selective enrollment school, so I know I get the best kids already. But what value do we add? They come in smart, but when they leave us, they have to be smarter. We did well this year, and we're looking forward to next year. Thank you very much.
From The New, Schmidt Elementary, Principal Andrea Black and Campus Director of Citizen Schools, Ally Brewer.
Thank you. Good morning. We are so excited to be here representing The New Schmidt Elementary. We have worked so hard to get here. When we joined, when I joined Schmidt a few years ago, we were just Schmidt. But we redefined ourselves with a new focus, a new vision, some new concepts of what we wanted to do. And we worked really hard at it, alongside my amazing staff, our wonderful scholars, which I like to call my babies, and our community, as well as our network, Network 12 led by Latanya McDade. We did an awesome job, focused on data-driven instruction, small group instruction, and even when necessary, individualized instruction. We ensured that our students had everything that they could to be successful, giving them exactly what they needed. We're a small school, so we have that ability to do that. With less than 250 students and one grade level per, one class per grade level, we could do that. There was no reason that we could not address every child's need, and that's what we decided to do. We aligned ourselves with some powerful partners, Citizen Schools, and then I'll let them join and tell you a little bit more about themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Black. I'm hearing a trend among all of the speakers, among that it takes a village to do this work. It's not just one person, but it takes families, it takes staff, it takes vision, leadership. And we had the fortunate opportunity, Citizen Schools, to partner with Schmidt last year, The New Schmidt, last year. And I thank Ms. Black so much for that opportunity to work together towards our scholars' achievements. Citizen Schools partners with schools to offer academic support. Last year, we did that through targeted, small-group instruction via, in math, via NWEA. And we were so humbled by the dedication, commitment from the community, the family, the staff. And we look forward to continuing to build off of that growth this year and accept the challenge to do even better this year.
So we're going to close by saying we are going to accept that challenge. We are the Chargers, and we'll continue to charge toward success every day in every way. So thank you so very much, The New Schmidt.
And representing one of the really, really great news stories in the district, Principal Rolanda Hobbs of Laura Ward School.
Good morning, everyone. I like to just say thank you so much for this honor. As I look around, to my right, to my left, and in front of me, Dr. Bird, Barbara Bird Bennett, I have to say thank you for your support. I am a relocating school with a merged population. My population doubled. So my staff had the challenge, as was given by Dr. Bird Bennett. Failure was not an option. And she told us that, and I sat there and I said, "I have 300 additional kids," and it turned out to be 400 additional kids that merged with us. My staff did a phenomenal job, and I have to just say thank you, thank you, thank you for all of the supports that you put into place. I look at Tom Terrell, and I have to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I'll look at Mrs. Little, and I have to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And then I have to say thank you, because she was there before we opened, and you knew the awesome challenge that we faced in just getting the building together, let alone the academics. And I have to go back to my former chief. Monitor, monitor, monitor. In October, I tore the curriculum apart because I said our initial look at our students, the data was not accurate, and we had to restructure. And as a result of not waiting to June to restructure, we were able to grow our students. And what it came down to is growing our students. And I had a staff that said, "We're with you all the way. Whatever you want us to do, we're there." And I just have to again say thank you, thank you, for all of your support. And I was told the other day, "Your staff's on fire." And we weren't organized last year, so if we're on fire now, I hate, I look forward to see where we're going next year. Thank you so much for this honor. And again, on behalf of my students, because it was their efforts that placed me here today, their parents which supported me, my staff whose shoulders I stood on last year to make this transition, thank you all.
Finally, we have a special word of recognition and congratulations to the three schools in our KIPP network, Ascend, Bloom, and Create, which were the highest-performing group of schools in the little network, with 90th percentile growth in math, 88th percentile growth in reading. I'd like to call Amy Pumba, Chief Academic Officer, to the podium.
Good morning. As John said, my name is Amy Pumba, and I'm the Chief Academic Officer for KIPP Chicago Schools. Thank you very much for honoring our schools today. KIPP Chicago has been serving Chicago families since we opened our doors in 2003. We currently serve students in the North Lawndale, Austin, and Anglewood communities. Our mission is to empower students with the knowledge, skills, and character traits that will help them not only succeed in top-quality high schools and universities, but also lead happy and fulfilling lives. In the past 10 years, we have seen our KIPPsters succeed both in and out of the classroom. To date, 87% of students who have finished 8th grade with us have gone on to college. Our oldest alumni are currently seniors in college, and we look forward to seeing them graduate this spring. We are incredibly pleased and grateful to be acknowledged today. Growth on the NWEA MAP Growth on the NWEA MAP test is one of several key indicators we at KIP Chicago use to hold ourselves accountable to the sacred promises we make to our students and families. At this time, I would like to speak briefly about the profound impact our team and family have played in this achievement. It takes great leaders and partners to get our KIPsters ready for high school and college. Today, we especially want to thank the Chicago Board of Ed, Barbara Bird Bennett, John Barker, Jack Elsie, and the team in the Office of Innovation and Incubation for supporting our schools and making it possible for KIP to serve families across the city. We want to thank our incredible teachers, whose motivation, drive, compassion, and commitment help ensure that all students reach their full potential. Our teachers embody the approach that makes our schools successful. High expectations for student achievement, a focus on results and relationships, and a commitment to constant learning and their own development. Lastly, we want to thank our students and their parents, who are committed to doing whatever it takes to make it to and through college. I am constantly impressed and inspired by how hard our families and students work to reach their goals and support one another. A few examples, just a few, include the lengthy distances many of our students and family travel to attend our schools, the countless hours students and families spend completing homework, the partnership we feel in our hearts when our families eagerly attend and volunteer at a myriad of school events, and their commitment to problem-solving and supporting each other through any and all challenges that arise. We truly are a team and family in service of our students and families. With that, I could not be more excited to introduce Crystal Watts, who is the proud parent of two current KIP Chicago students.
As introduced, my name is Crystal Watts. I am the proud, very proud, KIP parent of two awesome KIPsters. Simply put, KIP is amazing, and being honored for excellence on the MAP test is in the right aligns of the expectations that we all have for all of our KIPsters. I am glad that I chose KIP as my children's school. I know that they are receiving the proper training and great expectations needed, the right preparations, the character development, and support needed to have great, quality high school options, and to go to and through college. Since enrolling them at KIP, I have watched and seen all of our children academically and just grow so tremendously. Thank you for allowing my community to have a KIP school as an option, because they have really, really made a difference to our education and the lives of many in all of our families. From our dedicated and great teachers and staff, as you can see, and all of our KIP families, we'd like to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Dr. Bird Bennett, members of the board, these are but a few great opportunities for recognition and great reasons for celebration this year. Thank you all so much for this opportunity. This concludes our part of the program.
Thank you so much. I absolutely, I look and I smile, and each of you, I'm looking at a story that we've had, and I thank you so very, very much for all that you've done. Please, I hope that you extend sincere congratulations to those people who are in classrooms every single day with our students toiling endlessly and just, you know, liberating all the creative energy and the intelligence of our children. So thank you very, very much. You've got to beat your last best effort next year. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
President Vitale and members of the board, in addition to thriving academically last year, our children also exercised their creative minds, with 265 students submitting original designs for a new CPS logo. When we began this project last spring, I hoped our students would see it as an opportunity to express how they feel about their schools. I hope that they would create a legacy that would endure after they graduate and go on to pursue their dreams. With their passion and creativity, the students who participated in this contest more than fulfilled my hopes and aspirations. Joining us today are Ivan Delgado and Feng Li, two students who created our new logo. I had the pleasure last week of meeting with them and their parents and their brothers and sisters to celebrate their accomplishment. They joined me this morning, briefly, I had to go meet with one of our board members, but briefly for breakfast. Now, I am so pleased that they are both here. Ivan is a senior at Prassa High School, and Feng will enter Lincoln Park High School as a freshman next week. Our design committee was so impressed with their logo submissions that we couldn't decide between each of the children here today, young people here today. They've corrected me. So Ivan and Feng worked together with our arts department, merging their artwork to create one distinctive design. And the new logo shows our students growing up and ultimately graduating. It embodies who we are as a district and a bold, diverse community that reaches students early and guides them toward their future. These two young people, I congratulate you on this accomplishment, and I thank you. And as I shared with you, this is something that is going to last when you're grown-ups, when you're out in college, when you're out in the world, you can always look back at everybody's stationery, all the logos for the Chicago Public Schools throughout this city, and know that you created that brand, you created that symbol that represents all of the other students that are in our system. And so I paused to say, would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to say that I'm greatly honored to be one of the finalists, along with you at my side. I know that over 200 submissions have been sent in, and it was one of mine to be picked. It's a great honor to be the new face of Chicago Public Schools.
When I was coming up with this logo, I thought to myself, "What is the best representation of CPS?" And the answer to that would be the students and the people. They, we are what make up CPS. And then I thought to myself, "What can the students do for CPS?" And that would be to make progress and graduate. And that is my contribution, not only to the logo, but to CPS. Thank you.
I would add that one of the things that you guys shared with me when we met was, if you take a careful look at the logo, and I told you that I shared it, but I gave you credit, I didn't take credit for it, that you see the youngest person is entering the circle, which is CPS, and the older child is graduating with his foot out to enter into the world. And so I just thought that was so incredibly profound, as these young people shared what that really meant to them, the people. And Ivan told me, the color blue is his favorite, but it's also soothing. So I thank you guys. Thank you so very, very much. We're so proud of you.
Thank you for coming down and joining us. I'll always put your faces with those faces, with those silhouettes.